Um. Jennifer did. Tell me, did you get the email from me then Anthony? The one that I put out? The little reminder? You did get it?
I got it.
Okay. Well, we do now have a quorum. So we're going to go ahead and get started. So according to the agenda, call to order is at, by my computer, 5:23. And we'll, we'll let Matt take the lead with the review of the financials for February, which is probably pretty good because considering that I want to bring up spending some money here in a little bit.
Yeah. So we had, we had the January disbursement from the city of $1,000 that didn't make it into the banking. It crossed the month over, so we ended up with 2,000 in, in the month of February. And of course, we deposited the March account too. So right now, we've written checks in February. We only wrote one check to Kansas Publishing Ventures. That was for advertising, 11950. And then we did reimburse, wrote a check for Lisa for reimbursement for Lola's memorial, but that would end up in March. So currently our balance as of close of business today was $11,521.87. If you look at last month's balance, which is technically the February report, $10,597.87.
All right. And you got your check Lisa?
I haven't picked it up yet, but I will this week yet.
Well, on behalf of everybody, a big thank you for that. That was very, very touching and thank you for doing that.
No big deal.
Then we have the review of February minutes, but that's all done on, on tape now. So has, was there any, any questions about anything from the minutes or from the meeting from February from anyone? I'll take that as a no.
Is, so there's a way for us to review that or not?
Yeah, there, there's a video recording on the city's YouTube channel. We should do, we should do written minutes as well. And we, we know, we can do that. It will, will kind of change it up though a little bit. What you actually technically have to do for minutes. What we've done in the past is more like a transcript. We don't need to do that since there is actually a video recording of it. So we'll, we'll kind of change up those minutes and I'll talk a little bit with Connie about what that, what that looks like. And it should be pretty simple.
Is that Connie coming in on the iPad or is that Jennifer?
Yes, I finally got on. I, I've been waiting, waiting, waiting on the old, on the old. I, I didn't know he was going to send me a new number. So here I've been sitting on the other one, waiting for it to happen. Sorry. I'm learning.
So is that Connie?
I thought he, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No.
I thought I had to use the same Zoom number. I don't know about all this technical stuff. So here I go, my email phone, I'm like, maybe there's a new Zoom number. So I've been waiting patiently and waiting and I have a new router in my home and it's, the internet's not working great either. So we'll see how long I can stay on. So hopefully I won't. So I probably missed everything you just talked about. So we'll see here, sorry.
Nah, we haven't covered much yet.
Okay. So, okay.
Yeah, you just, I don't know if you heard the part, Matt said he's going to get together with you on how, how we're going to be doing the minutes since everything is on video.
Yes, yes. I, I did send him the minutes, but I don't know if he even got it.
No, I, I didn't see it. So I don't know, maybe it got stuck in my filter, maybe, I don't know. I'll have to look.
I sent it to, I don't know when it was, uh, maybe a week or two ago, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to look.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. It could be, it could be in our spam filter. We have a pretty aggressive spam filter.
Here we go, okay. Sorry.
No, not a problem.
So who, who's all in this meeting then?
Okay, we have myself, Shawna, you, Matt, Lisa, Casey and Anthony.
Okay, I'm making the minutes here, so. Okay, all right. So there's no minutes there because no one knows. Do I need to get on a grid or something here? Because I'm trying to figure out, here we go. I'm trying to find a grid, there we go, here we go. There we go, now we're good, okay. Okay, I'm good now.
Okay, we, we see, it just says iPad for you. Do you see?
I can see you guys, you just can't see me and I don't know why. But that's okay, you don't need to see me.
Good.
We, we love you little voice.
I'll see if I can fix that by next time.
As far as new business, um, does anybody have anything that you have heard about? That's coming up through, through Hillsborough? That we should be getting out on our, on our Facebook page to help promote? I, I've been doing things promoting like the, things from the chamber. But I didn't know, is there, is there anything else that we should be helping to get the word out? Or you know of any events that are coming up to do with sports or anything else?
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of anything. I know you've been promoting the Chambers Easter egg hunt event. So yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's anything pressing right now. I think the Chamber's got, also has a cruise night coming up in April, I think. So that'll be.
April 24th.
April 24th, so be able to get, get going on promoting that and kind of cross promoting that stuff.
Sorry, that's my phone, let me shut that back, sorry. I'll call her back, she, yeah. Sorry about that, everybody. What about, okay, is there anything? We had promoted last year, the disc golf. So is there any information like from the city that we can put out on our Facebook page about disc golf?
Uh, yeah, and they've got all, all 18 holes up and running, so that would be something.
Oh, okay.
I'll ask Doug to give me some information about that.
Okay, and then we can get that out and, and that was one of the things that I know people had seen on, on Facebook about the disc golf. And we, we hope we can get people to come in. Yeah, if you could get the information then.
Yep, no problem.
As far as like where they can pick things up. I, I know that's all through the rec. So we'll, maybe we can put that out and, and start bringing folks. I know it's not always going to be cool and chilly and wet. So. If anybody hears of anything at all, you know, jot it down or send us all an email. On the business of old business, um, we've talked a couple of times about doing something in honor of Lola. And it was brought up about Main Street Ministries, the, our last meeting. So I contacted Main Street Ministries and spoke to Stephanie Moss. And it was really, really touching. She said that the day that I called her, she had been really concerned about how they were going to get another apartment at Main Street Ministries because with COVID, people getting laid off or on furlough, it had really taken a toll, a financial toll on a number of families in the community. And that they were full, all of their apartments are full. And they're trying to redo what's down in the basement. It was that storage room. So I, did everybody get the email that I sent you all? What she sent us?
Yes.
Okay. You had photographs and everything?
Yep.
She actually started to have a, her voice was cracking and she said, I had been praying the last couple of days, how we were going to do this, how we were going to fill a need for the community. And when I was telling her how as a CBB, we had discussed donating some funds or project or something in Lola's name. And she just, oh, she was just ecstatic. She sent me all of this stuff. She said that if we could help them to do this, um, they would be putting up a plaque in this apartment that would honor Lola. So did everybody get a chance to look over her proposal and get, get some thoughts on what you think we could do as a CBB?
I know that if we, um, look at donating some flooring or something like that, Menards is having like an amazing sale right now on their flooring, like the laminate and stuff like that.
Okay.
Because I think to do like over a thousand square feet of just one, one of the products, you know, I was looking at it to do over like, over a thousand square feet was only going to be about a thousand dollars. I mean, it was, it was seriously like a dollar a square foot.
I'm having trouble getting that stuff to open up. Matt, is it possible for you to, to screen share it?
Yep.
I can't get it, I can't get it to pull up for some reason.
I think this is probably what we want to look at. Can you guys see that?
Yes, yeah, that's great.
So I, Sue, the question I would have is, I mean, these are, they've got sponsorship remodeling and, you know, new appliances and it is, are, are they wanting, I guess, cash donations is what this is about, but.
Yes, and, and I got the impression that they've already priced the materials and appliances.
Okay.
They just don't have the money.
Yeah.
To do it.
So are these the only giving options? I mean, you know, 4,000 is pretty steep for the.
Yeah.
CBB, 25, even 2,500 is pretty steep for the CBB. You know, 1,500 is not, not awful, but that's still, you know, a month and a half worth of revenue, so.
Right.
I mean.
What do we use all of our money for? What are some things that we need to pay for during the year? I don't even know because I'm new to this board.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's the sign rent that we normally pay for the billboards and I don't have that in front of me, what that is, but you know, that's, that's an expense and you know, we, we spend a lot of money on promotional stuff. We really don't have a budget for this year. We really ought to, ought to put one together. We've got kind of last year's as a model, so. You know, there, there's, there's a handful of things that we're kind of committed to. And you know, from an event standpoint, I think we do a pretty fair amount, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a pretty fair amount for like arts and crafts and you know, the Christmas stuff. I think there's, there's some money that goes out there, so. I don't know, what else, Sue? You, you probably have, you have the longest tenure here. What other things do we need to be thinking about?
Yeah, I was just kind of quickly going through my mind train to remember all of the different things that we, that we help sponsor.
Well, I think last year you sponsored a lot more things. Well, because there wasn't a lot going on.
Yeah, the basketball tournament at the high school, we've helped with that, with that, that room where the. Yeah, hospitality room, we also do that. That's kind of been an ongoing thing for quite a number of years.
And how much is that?
I, I do not have that in front of me, I'd have to pull it up. Let me see if I've got the 21 stuff. Trojan Classic, last year we put in 1,500.
Okay.
Uh, there was a donation, let me just grab this. Donation to the splash pad from through to the community foundation for a thousand. We're in the Marion County Travel Guide, there's something listed for that, Kansas Travel Guide. We've supported the Citywide Garage Sale in the past, there was a hundred dollars for that.
To help with advertising?
Yeah, I'm guessing so. Sign rental, but there's that Marion County Fair, there was a $500 donation, it looks like for that. Yeah, and there's other things, I mean, there's cruise night stuff. We did some stuff with cruise night. I have one line item that's labeled regional tourism. I'm not a hundred percent sure I know what that is, but, um.
Is that that?
That's the South Central Tourism Group that we're a part of.
Okay.
And that was, that was something CBB was a part of in the past and then we weren't for a while. And then I think last year was the first time in a while that we've been a part of that.
I think that's an important thing to.
Yeah.
Keeps Hillsborough out there.
Yeah, it, I mean, I think that it is one of those things, you get what you put in and I don't know that we're putting in a lot. So we kind of need maybe somebody that, that's able to, to be a little bit more involved with that.
I think we started to talk about somebody to be more involved with that and then of course COVID hit.
Yeah.
Right.
And we weren't having meetings or anything, so.
Yeah. And Sue, you should be getting emails now, are you?
I think I got one and when I got it, I had already missed the meeting that they had.
Yeah.
You had asked.
Yeah, I, I asked Christina from Great Bend to put you on the mailing list for that.
And I looked at the email and then I looked at the clock and I went, well, missed that one by two hours.
Yeah.
I'll be more, I will be more proactive where that's concerned. I'll check that tomorrow and sorry.
It's all right. So all in all, last year it looks like we were, we were a little over $8,000 we spent in the given year. If, if my math looks right here. So, you know, there, there, if we're not going to be doing something for like this, for example, if we don't make a donation, a thousand dollar donation to the splash pad, that's a thousand dollars that could be put to something like this. I mean, it's not that it's not a worthy cause, I think it is. It's just, you know, some of the, some of these sponsorship levels are a bit aggressive.
Yeah.
From CBB.
What, what, I think that we should give something. I, I think that 1,500 is probably a little bit, little bit steep. I think we should consider something, but you know, also just thinking about, you know, what Lola would want. And I think that she would want us to be spending this money, you know, for, you know, tourism related things. So I, I don't feel like we need to give 1,500. You know, maybe we're donating $250 or something for this project and yeah, but that's kind of my thoughts.
When her obituary came out, at the end of the obituary, it's, they had a little notation for donations to be made to Main Street Ministries. And that's, that's, that's where the initial came up.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with Anthony that, you know, I think 250 is a pretty good, pretty good amount. It's obviously it's not to the sponsorship remodel level or anywhere near the remodel appliance level. But you know, I, I feel like that's a pretty fair amount for the CBB to give.
Personally, I was hoping we could do at least 500.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm open to 500, I think that's probably fine too.
Yeah.
And the other thing we could do is I'm okay with 500 too. I think we could, you could post on Facebook that we are encouraging people to donate for this project in Lola's name.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Or you could even maybe even, well, I don't know if you want to turn it into a challenge, but you know, the CBB is doing 500. What can you do?
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
I, I think that that's a good idea. You're doing something as kind of a, you know, we're going to donate $500, but we're also going to promote kind of a fundraiser for, and Lola's remembrance for this project. I think that, I think that we could definitely play a role in that.
Yes, I like that idea too. Do the 500 and then donate. Or Lisa, I think you were challenged, I kind of like that and, yeah, I like it.
Yeah, I like it too, I do too.
So we would probably want to make a motion then to do the 500 and, and the promotion, is that fair?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of having a $500 donation to the Main Street Ministries towards the remodel of their space for an apartment and then to put a challenge out on Facebook? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, ayes have it, so we will be writing a check and I, I'll be in town on, well, I, I'll be in town tomorrow and then also on Friday, so I can sign a check.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have it ready, I'll have it ready for you tomorrow, Sue.
Okay, yeah, I have to be in Hillsborough tomorrow and so we'll take care of that. Thank you, everybody, because I know Lola played a big role in the Main Street Ministries as well and she would, she would appreciate that, I'm quite sure. Any other old business from anybody that I may have overlooked? Okay, then as far as the report from the museum, Steve has been posting on Facebook that tours are back up and running. It's going to be, it's going to be, you know, you have to wear a mask and all that right now. But tours are starting back up again. The CBB has also been sharing those posts from the museum on Facebook. There was an addition of some new lights for the porch at the Schaeffler House. And there's been a lot of people commenting on, on positive comments on it. And so if we can get them to look at the outside, maybe we can get them to look at the inside too.
Yeah, it looks nice, I like the work they did, it turned out nice.
Really did. Now Anthony, were, were you and Lisa just going to kind of share the responsibility of doing a report from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, we can.
I don't know.
The Chamber hasn't met yet this month, so we don't meet till tomorrow. So if Lisa has anything to share, go ahead.
Well, what I can tell you is that we're doing the cruise on the 24th of April. We're doing the gala that normally is in February on May 10th. We aren't quite sure a location yet, we're still working on that. We're throwing it back and forth. Um, we will probably be doing cruise nights, June, July and August for sure. And in August, we will, we are looking at doing an outdoor movie again. So that is something that we're going to work on. We don't have a date set or anything else, but that's kind of where we're at with, we're trying to have more activities instead of less. And, um, but probably not as extreme as last year.
You don't want to wear yourselves out.
Well, and last year was crazy, but hopefully this year we won't have as many needs as we did last year to provide some outside activities.
Well, last year for the movie night, the weather couldn't have been more perfect. So we can always hope that Mother Nature will, will.
Well, and it was in September, but we feel like the Arts and Crafts Fair is coming back this year. So we don't want to do it in September and that's why we're looking at August. And Midway has already committed to be a part of that.
Oh, wonderful.
So we're excited about that.
And then if, if there is something that the CBB can do to help with that, you'll let us know?
Yes, as soon as we kind of get a date picked, we will, yes, we will present what the options are to helping with that.
That would be good, because I, I remember last year, there were people that came from all over the Hillsborough area and were sitting out there, you know, enjoying the movie and having popcorn and candy bars and sodas and enjoying the, the, the cotton candy and all the yummies that went with it. So it, it, it was, it was a good night.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun. So we do want to bring that back and we'll probably stick with our theme of something about cars. So we've been kind of talking about Smokey and the Bandit.
That's one of my favorites. I promise not to drive. Lisa's.
Yeah, that's kind of where, that's where we're at with things, so. And we're always open to suggestions of some new things to do.
Well, I think the CBB helping to do what we can to make movie night and cruise nights, everything to, well, let us know what we can do, okay?
Okay, we'll probably have a better plan after our meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, for the splash pad, do we, is that supposed to be done this summer? Does anyone know?
Yeah, we're getting, we actually, I think we have a final design that hasn't quite been released to everybody out in the public yet. But the committee is going to meet sometime next, in the next week or two, to kind of put the final stamp of approval. The idea or the hope anyway is that we will have something, the splash pad part of the park done hopefully this year, we're going to be fighting, uh, going to be fighting, you know, the weather and, and the, the cruise that. Um, this year, we're gonna be fighting, uh, gonna be fighting, you know, the weather and and the the crews that have been staged there for the, um. Fiber optic project, so it may not, it may not get completely, if it isn't, it may have a pretty short season this year, but. Uh, the intention is to get something in there this year, so.
Okay, good.
That would, that will bring people into town as well, and.
Yeah.
Then. That'll, that'll just increase visiting and people coming and visiting family, and they can go, oh, hey, it's the weekend, let's, let's just go check it out. Or you guys go to the pool, we'll go to the splash pad, so hopefully we can bring people into town with that.
Yep.
Yay.
It'll be nice, it'll be a nice project.
I promise I won't just wear my bathing suit, I'll wear shorts and everything else, but I'll go, too.
Thank you, Sue.
Yes, there's certain things about me you just don't need to see. Not at this age. As far as any other business, um. Has anyone? Been aware of anything that the CBB can, uh. Contribute to? Shauna, last time you, you had had some, some information that turned out to be. Different than what you, what you had hoped it would be. Are there any updates?
Yeah.
On that?
No, that was disappointing, I do apologize for that, but yeah, it's. Something wasn't really meant for Hillsborough, it was for other places, so. I just assumed that it could work for Hillsborough, and there you go, but she did say she, um, would reach out to Anthony if there was any way to.
There you go. Yeah.
Shauna, remind me, who was it that you were talking to about that?
Angie Swer.
Yeah, it was Angie, okay, that's what I thought, I just couldn't quite remember.
Yeah, she, uh, they're working with something to encourage people to move to towns that have fiber internet now for bedroom community kind of thing. Or commute, you know, wouldn't have to commute, so, so, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what that was about.
Good idea. If we don't have anything else, um. Until next time, everybody have a safe and healthy Easter.
I will be gone next month, I will be at my granddaughter's.
Oh, you get to go play, oh, bless your heart.
But will somebody else be able to do the minutes, and I'll talk to Matt Skiles here at some point about these minutes and get them figured out, but will somebody be able to do the minutes for me, or how does that work?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, okay, and Matt, I'll get with you, I'll come talk to you here shortly, in next week or so.
Okay, yep, that works.
All right, sounds good.
Well, with that, everybody, happy Easter, stay healthy, stay safe. One of these days it'll work, and we'll all meet in person, but up until then, I enjoy hearing your voices and seeing your faces on screen. And thank you all for the time that you contribute to helping promote Hillsborough, that's, that's really a, a wonderful thing you're all doing, so thank you. So I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Don't move, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Chow, chow puppies, we'll check you later.
Thanks, Sue.
Bye.